I call it to order the Maplewood City Council meeting on Tuesday, March fourteenth, two thousand, two thousand twenty-three. We acknowledge that we are on the traditional land of Kikapu, Osage, Miami, Iroquois, and great Sioux Nation people. Please rise and join me in saying we pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call vote, roll call, please.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Here.
Councilmember Homa.
Yeah.
Mayor Knapper.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Madam Mayor, Quormin's present.
Thank you. We can skip item five. Madam Clerk, item number six.
Approval of the February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three city council meeting minutes.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number seven.
A resolution of the city council of the city Maplewood Missouri, declaring the results of the special election for councilperson Ward One, held on Tuesday, February seventh, twenty twenty-three as official.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve resolution, second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-three dash eight is approved.
Madam Clerk, item number eight.
It's a motion for recess.
May I have a motion?
Motion to recess, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Then we'll go into item number nine.
Swearing in for newly elected official.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we shall now. If you hope you raise your right hand if you want to move. I, Matthew Corio.
I, Matthew Corio.
Do you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution.
I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
The United States.
The Constitution of the State of Missouri.
The Constitution of the state of Missouri.
And the Charter of ordinances of the city of Maplewood.
Charter and ordinance and ordinances of the city of Maplewood.
And that I will.
And I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform the duties.
Faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of council member.
The office of council member.
Ward one.
Ward one.
During my continuance thereon.
During my continuance thereon.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, Judge. All right.
Got any words for us, Matt?
Well, actually, I was gonna thank all fifty-four, two of the voters by name, if you guys have a minute.
No, sir, no, sir. We're trying to get to your cake.
Let's do the cake. Thank you, everybody. I really do appreciate all the support that everybody. Seriously, there's been so many people that have helped me get to this spot right now. Thank you so much.
Council meeting. Madam Clerk, item number twelve.
Approval of the council agenda.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Madam Clerk, item number thirteen.
Public hearing to hear citizens' comments on a request by Michael Fisher of Burger Champ to be located at twenty-seven oh four Sutton Boulevard for a full and Sunday liquor license.
At this time, the public is invited to provide any comment that they would like. If you're joining us via Zoom, please raise your Zoom hand. Mr. Reese will call upon you. If you're joining us in the chambers, please step to the podium and you can make your comment.
Mayor Knapper, there are no hands.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number fourteen.
A public forum.
At this time, this, you are invited to step to the podium if you'd like to provide public comment. And if you are joining us via Zoom, please raise your Zoom hand. Mr. Reese will call upon you.
Mayor Knapper, there are no hands.
All right, thank you. So forgive us, we're gonna have you do a little work. You have to press the button the entire time you talk.
All right.
That's the work you have to do, but that's it. All right, thank you.
All right. Good evening. I, uh, sorry, it's a question. Good evening. My name is Nancy Mills. I own and reside in seven-five-seven-zero Comfort in Maplewood. I'm here, um, cast for your guidance on a matter. Several weeks ago, a tenant who's residing at twenty-eight forty-eight Oakland had, um, by semi truck and flatbed, a forty, a, what would be, I would call it a stipulate that it is a mobile home. It's called a tiny home. Moved to the driveway at twenty-eight forty-eight Oakland where she rents. Um, the height on the semi flatbed is thirty to forty feet in height. It is a story and a half. Two towers and a length approximately sixty feet long. The length is so great, it can be seen four houses up. It is visible on comfort. I have reviewed, uh, section fifty-eight, excuse me, fifty-six dash five-five-nine and section fifty-six dash five-six-zero, which are prohibited uses under the zoning code. And I would offer to you that the storage of mobile homes for use and or dwelling is prohibited in residential areas. I ask for your guidance on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reese? Have you had an opportunity to speak with our community member?
I have not, but I'm happy to do so.
Okay.
I do know, um, I spoke to Councilmember Phillips on this matter because I believe she was contacted by some neighbors on this. Um, we did have, uh, one of our community resource officers look into this issue. They, um, I wanna review the email that, um, he sent to me, I think, yesterday, um, to ensure that we're looking at the same prohibited uses that were just cited. Um, first of all, there's no one living, living in the, um, in this unit. Um, so there's no violation related to that. There's no one living there. Um, it, it's, um, and, um, the way our community resource officer described it is that there were no violations occurring related to the, um, height or length of the units according to our city code. But I want to review all that and later, you'll always share with us this evening to double back and make sure that's absolutely the case. So I'm happy to revisit and I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name. Okay, so I'm happy to meet with Ms. Mills and, um, also follow up with the community resource officer. Councilmember Phillips, did you have something to add to this?
Um, just that Nancy is, is representative of a couple of the neighbors immediately around, um, that, where that tiny house is being stored, so. Um, it, it's quite a large, large vehicle.
Yes.
Um, and, uh, depending upon what time of day you go there, um, other neighbors have witnessed lights on, um, in the evening, during the, um, during the evening, so.
Okay.
This, excuse me, Ms. Mills, I'm not sure if you can stay for the entire meeting, but if you would, so you would have an opportunity to, um, talk with Mr. Reese, I would appreciate it. Okay, awesome. Thank you very much. Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, any additional public comment?
There are no hands.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number fifteen.
Announcement.
Just one announcement tonight, the Maplewood Coffee Crawl is this Saturday. The Early Riser Tour is sold out, but the Sleepin' In Tour has a few tickets left. Visit cityofmaplewood.com/fun to purchase tickets.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number sixteen. You can just state it. Yeah. You just stated.
Okay. Kevin Scott, general manager of security for Metro Presentation.
And Mr. Reese, I believe that's gonna be rescheduled, is that correct? All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, item number seventeen.
Motion. Motion to approve a full and Sunday liquor license for Michael Fisher of Burger Champ to be located at twenty-seven oh four Sutton Boulevard.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, go ahead, sir.
What's the story here? Are we getting a burger place?
That's what it looks like.
It's awesome.
He's awesome.
I'll be voting yes.
Nice.
Need more burgers, maybe.
We do, we need more good burgers. All right, that was the discussion. Uh, any, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Madam Clerk, item number eighteen.
Special Business District report by Nikki Beisel.
Let me bring Miss Beisel in to our meeting. Miss Beisel, welcome to the Maplewood City Council.
All right. Thank you guys for having me so much. I'm gonna share my screen and hopefully you guys can see it.
I think I gave you permission. I think you're good.
Yeah, I think you're right. All right. Can you see that okay?
Yes.
Perfect. All right. Thank you guys for having me. I appreciate it. Uh, my name is Nikki Beisel. I own Seaford Media. We're at twenty-seven thirty-two Sutton. I am the chair of the SPD Commission. And I'm here to just tell you a little bit about what we've done over the past year and some of our plans as we look ahead. So, over the past year, we've had seven annual events with a combined estimated attendance of over fifteen thousand people. You can see some of those over here on the right side. Uh, included in that was also the debut of our Maplewood Route sixty-six celebration event. The event was super well received. Uh, we're making some adjustments for twenty twenty-three, which include moving the event to September sixteenth, scaling back the footprint a bit, adding a car show and a new partnership with the Missouri Route sixty-six Association. Uh, we continued our quarterly happy hours. When we first started it, uh, the happy hours were just for businesses in the SPD. But we expanded that in twenty twenty-two to include all Maplewood businesses, not just those in the SPD. We don't have an agenda for those. It's just an opportunity to connect with fellow business owners and, um, you know, share, share war stories, if you will, uh, and, and get to know each other and, um, solidify that sense of community amongst one another. Uh, we also started, uh, black, black owned business promotion. Um, that's a new promotion to highlight and celebrate Maplewood's black owned businesses every August. This will be an annual promotion and includes a dedicated page on the city's website, which is already up, if you guys haven't seen it. Um, we've also, uh, we also commissioned local artist Genevieve Essen to create new artwork for five utility boxes along Manchester Road. Uh, her work captures the vibrancy and historic downtown Maplewood. In terms of our renovation grants, we've given out thirty-five hundred in grant money thus far, and we expect to grant another seven thousand or so before the fiscal year ends. Our renovation grants include mechanical plumbing and electric for interior, windows, doors, awnings, patios, et cetera, for exterior. Um, looking ahead, we have a lot of really cool things on the horizon. Uh, we've got quite a few new businesses coming into Maplewood. Uh, Hanma Grab, Grab and Go Market, Tapped is reopening, Blissfully Popped, Black Market Eats, Locos Tacos, Burger Champ, and Prioritized Pastries. Uh, we spent some time over the past few months setting some goals or themes for ourselves as a commission. Uh, what our hope is with this is to, to sort of prevent stagnancy and complacency and keep us really proactive in terms of what our mission is as a commission. So those goals for us are generating our own money, a deeper involvement, excitement, and engagement from businesses within the SPD, better visual definition of the SPD, increased safety, and better inclusivity. Uh, the Manchester Road Surfacing Project, uh, we look forward to wrapping up, uh, all of that at the end of this month. The business community really appreciated the city halting construction during the holiday shopping season. Uh, the infrastructure that's well-kept roads and accessible sidewalks with our infrastructure are essential in attracting customers and new businesses. Uh, we're also, uh, planning on continuing the, uh, design and installation process for kiosks and wayfinders. We put that on hold, uh, with the construction, cause that wouldn't have been good to install a bunch of new kiosks and wayfinders and then have all the road construction. Uh, but it's a priority now as the construction is wrapping up. Uh, the city recently revamped the Maplewood Business Watch Program. And while this program is for all businesses in Maplewood, the discussion of security has been at the forefront of our SPD meetings and taking a proactive versus reactive approach to it. Additionally, uh, the SPD plans to budget money to improve the pedestrian walkway in the seventy-one hundred block of Manchester. The walkway is on the south side of the street as you enter from the city limits. The Sierra Club had planted native plants in the area several years ago, but it went unmaintained and now needs some attention. The SPD plans to work with the Parks and Rec Commission, Sustainability Commission, and the MRH Middle School Sustainability Class to revive the walkway. Uh, one of the cool things about that is it, um, really follows one of the goals or themes that we set for ourselves with the better visual definition of the SPD. And lastly, uh, the commission is, is exploring the idea of open banners for businesses inside the SPD. We're at the beginning phase of gathering interest and conceptualizing how it might look. There are a few hurdles to work through, but the idea, which was brought to us by a business owner, ties into our goal of creating a better visual definition of the SPD as well. Um, so we're really, really excited about how twenty twenty-two went. Um, during the announcements, I heard, uh, Coffee Crawl mentioned, um, which is one of those seven annual events. And I think twenty twenty-three is gonna be, uh, an even better year with the plans that we have for the Route sixty-six event. And some of the, some of the cool things we have coming with the kiosks, the pedestrian walkway, uh, so on and so forth. So that's kind of a, a little look into what we've been doing and what we have planned for this year.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Could you talk a little bit more about the concept for the open business banners?
Yeah, so, um, like I said, these were brought, uh, the idea was brought to us by a business owner in the SPD. And they would be, um, cloth banners that would kind of hang at a diagonal from the walls, from the exterior walls of the businesses. So it's kind of eye-catching, uh, and it helps a lot in particular with non-restaurants. So restaurants are typically pretty easy to, to notice when they're open or closed. Um, but some of the, the other stores and shops, uh, in the SPD would love a way to better quickly and visually, uh, let potential customers identify that they're open.
Thank you. That sounds awesome.
I think there, Nikki, I don't know if this was talked about, but there may need to be a change in the city code.
Yeah, it's, it's one of the things as we're talking through as a commission, we know that we would need to change some or, or discuss with you some of the sign ordinance stuff.
So Brian Hurst, um, looked into this discussion, working with, uh, something that he is supportive of, and we do it the right way and coordinate.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But the council know we've been having this conversation.
I really appreciate the partnership that the SPD is doing with, um, other commissions for the city. And I'm very excited to hear about the partnership with the MRH School District and the work that you all are gonna do with the middle school. So thank you all so much for that.
Yeah, absolutely. We're excited about it, too.
Anything further?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you guys so much.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, item number nineteen.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, to accept the bid of Spencer Contracting in the amount of one million, one thousand, two hundred ninety-eight dollars for street sidewalk and parking lot reconstruction with a contingency of ten percent or one hundred thousand, one hundred twenty-nine dollars for a total of one million, one hundred, one thousand, four hundred twenty-seven dollars.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Any discussion?
Um, I just had a, a question slash comment, um, just ensuring that some of the sidewalk work isn't gonna be done until the ADA, um, uh, audit, um, so that we don't have to redo sidewalks multiple times if there are ADA requirements that we're not meeting.
Uh, Councilmember, I will follow up on that and make sure there's coordination there.
Thank you.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Corio.
Is it a yes? Yes. It is a yes.
And Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-three dash nine is approved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number twenty.
Bill sixty-two twenty and ordinance establishing an emergency social services fund to provide assistance to meet emergency needs of individuals or families in the community.
That was the final reading. May I have a motion?
Oh, is that the final reading? So this is the first of two, right?
It's the final.
It's final. Motion to approve the vote, second.
Any discussion? Hey colleague. This queen right here put this together, okay? All right. Any additional discussion? Hearing the Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Corio.
Yes.
Ordinance number six-zero-one-five is approved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number twenty-one.
Maplewood Tenant Bill of Rights.
So, uh, I received notice from Mr. Reese that there will be some ordinances and pretty much like a framework, if you will, of the Maplewood Tenant Bill of Rights that I would like to submit to you all, um, right now, uh, our city attorney, Mr. Reese's staff and Mr. Reese, ha, they have met a couple of times, probably more than two times, um, just to discuss my requests on this proposal, essentially taking Kansas City, Missouri's, uh, Tenant Bill of Rights and seeing what we can do to either pull out ordinances that we already have that could go into our own Bill of Rights, or, um, if we need to, if we need to create our own ordinances that mimic, uh, some of what Kansas City has. So, excuse me, there are some ordinances that, um, we need a little more time to work on. And so that's why when we meet on the twenty-eighth, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna give you like the framework of that, but it won't be complete, um, until we can get those other ordinances created. And that's gonna take about two months. That was the estimate that I received from Mr. Reese. So that's pretty much the plan right now. Um, are there any questions? Okay, cool. Then Madam Clerk, item number twenty-two.
Old Business Ordinance Review Committee.
Oh, okay. Um, all right. Uh, Madam Clerk, item number twenty-three.
The Council Communication.
Congratulations, Mr. Coro.
Yeah.
Awesome. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
That's a yay.
Is it a thank you? It's a thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, item number twenty-four.
Mayor's Report.
Um, just a brief report, the mayor's elder task force will meet tomorrow and we are working on creating a, an easy-to-follow, um, directions for elders who want to appeal their property assessment. Um, that information, I'd like for it to be disseminated throughout our community, but we're really focusing on our elders because I wanna make sure that they really can age in place. Um, and, and in order to do that, we need to make sure they can stay in our, in their homes. And so right now, we have, we, we met, um, about two months ago, brainstormed on what we would do. We are looking at creating like a volunteer system where we could have someone, um, that could meet an elder at the library and we could use the library computers to upload, um, documents or to fill out the, the appeal, uh, work online. I'm also in contact with, um, the director of the library, Ms. Bryant, and I am going to follow up with her to get some details so we could have a partnership with the elder task force in the library to do this work. Uh, so that and then, excuse me, I have talked about being a member of the mayor's, uh, guaranteed income, which is a nonprofit that is pretty, that we are asking our federal government to create a law that would provide guaranteed income to families, persons that are in poverty. We believe that a guaranteed income can help bring them out of poverty. And so there there are only two mayors in the state of Missouri that are a part of this, this program. I'm one and then Mayor Tashara Jones is the second. Um, excuse me, happy three-one-four day because, you know, the two mayors are there. Yeah. Yeah, three-one-four. So, um, I believe that I may have found a partner to, um, fund this pilot program. I'm very excited. Um, but like my good colleague, uh, Paige said, we're gonna knock on some wood, don't wanna jinx it. I'd like to get the proposal to them, um, make sure that I have a solid yes before I try to have a ticker-tape parade. So, but I'm very happy that they were willing to accept the proposal. So I'm working on that right now. And, um, that is it. I, I hope that people go to the, uh, Coffee Crawl, cause it's a good time. Madam Clerk, item number twenty-five.
Did the attorney's report?
Thank you. Item number twenty-six, Madam Clerk.
City Manager's Report.
Uh, yes, thank you. I have two items, uh, just in the package. Um, I, uh, as we did last year as well, I put together a schedule for boards and commissions to come before council, so, um, the rest of the year. And, um, you basically have months, not specific dates, but months assigned to. not specific dates, but months assigned to the various boards and commissions. So we will work to get dates, uh, specific dates assigned as we get closer based on the availability of those individuals. So, um, uh, again, the idea is to have each board and commission come before the council once we're ready to give you enough for them. That's kind of it. Um, and then the second item, I just wanted to, uh, talk briefly about, and if there are any questions, happy to answer them. In the packet, I put together a memo entitled State Bills and Exempt Food from Local Sales Tax. I know the mayor raised this at the meet last meeting, the previous meeting that we had on the budget and, um, um, I had followed up, uh, with the, uh, Municipal League, Pat Kelly, who I think does a really good job, and some of my colleagues, uh, city managers. And, um, the memo I put together was not to panic anyone or to alarm anyone. But I think it was important because there was, um, serious momentum uh, to one of the bills, Senate Bill one thirty-one in particular. The good news is that is not moving forward as of today. Um, there's always the possibility they could try to attach that, uh, or that proposal to, uh, a, a bill that's moving through. And, um, folks are gonna be watching that closely. Or it could come back again next year, 'cause this is the second year in a row this has come on. So, um, you know, we wanna be mindful of that, but, uh, the bottom line is this, this would be devastating to a lot of cities. It would be devastating to the city of Maplewood if a proposal like this became law to, um, exempt food from local sales tax. And when we do it with no plan, we replace the revenue. That's the real issue. Um, and, um, it eliminates a quarter of our, of our revenue. And we, we would have, like, serious cuts in revenues. And, um, um, so at the last St. Louis Area City Managers' Meeting, which, uh, we, we have a monthly meeting, and we had it last, last week. Um, you know, everyone was sort of weighing in on this. We have four major grocery stores in Maplewood, um, that impact us. Some cities have more, some have less, but every city pretty much, uh, in the St. Louis region that make up St. Louis County would be negatively impacted by this. So everyone was weighing in in different ways. I still think it's important, um, to reach out to our legislators to tell them what the impact is. If we haven't already, I, I still think that's important, because again, this can come back again, just as easy as, as next year. There was a, uh, a report by Channel Four this morning, which I shared with you, and and, uh, I'm not gonna go into all the, the, all the details, but it would be devastating to us. Um, and, uh, that's why I put the memo together, just to be clear on and how bad it would impact, uh, the city of Maplewood um, in a number of ways, including, including our capital program. That's what starts our, our services, our staff, and it would it would impact us in, in, in multiple ways. So, be happy to answer any questions, but, uh, thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. Madam Clerk, item number twenty-seven.
Public Forum.
At this time, you are invited to step to the podium. If you are in the chamber with us, like to provide a comment. And if you are joining us online, please raise your Zoom hand, and Mr. Reese will call upon you.
Just gonna give an extra moment here, because somebody brings their hand previously. Gonna make sure that, um, okay, there are no hands.
Mr. Reese, do we need to go into closed session?
No.
Then may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
We adjourn. Thank you.